All right, we just gotta read in this motion first.
Yes, sir.
Okay. To receive the fiscal, motion two, receive the fiscal impact statement for the NEAM Teachers Assistance Union.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion recess executive session reconvene and open session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two, forty-six, seven of Rhode Island General Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's get going with the town update number two. The town administrator providing an update on town projects.
Motion begin the town projects update.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sean.
Good evening. This is a quick update based on material that was provided to the town council at the last meeting. First, in the public safety realm, two new fire trucks should be arriving, hopefully at the end of this month, October. They are in production. They'll replace our two oldest frontline trucks and give firefighters safer and more reliable equipment. We've also ordered two new ambulances. They will not be delivered until early of twenty-twenty-seven because of the way the supply chain is now structured. It just takes a long period of time to order and receive fire apparatus. On the development side, the town council will hold hearings on zoning and plan changes for the Middletown Town Center. That's actually scheduled tomorrow night at the Middletown High School. So that's important. It's a different venue than the planning board meetings. And I believe Wendy, that starts at six o'clock?
It starts at six.
Six o'clock. So that meeting, six o'clock at Middletown High School. If approved, after there'll be a second hearing on September thirtieth, the developers would move forward in their plans to develop a mixed-use development on the property. Housing is another focus that the administration is continuing to work on. The East Main Road project is continuing. We are currently in the process of preparing an application for a permit with the planning board. We hope to have the plans done here by the end of the month and getting to the planning board in October. At that time, we'll start working on an RFP for someone to come in and help us develop the housing units. Just it's important to note that we've received nearly two million dollars from the state to support this initiative. And we're looking to create, you know, in the neighborhood of thirty deed restricted homes for first-time buyers on the property. On the planning side, the comprehensive plan update, we are continuing to move ahead. The planner's been doing an exceptional job as well as the committee. Just to note, the council was supportive of hiring a consultant this cycle to help us move the comprehensive plan forward in a more regular cadence so that it would be done in a timely manner. I believe that in your next meeting, the comprehensive plan committee will receive a draft. And then the full draft is expected to be received by the committee in November. After that, then we go on to the bigger process with planning board meetings and town council meetings to actually accept the comprehensive plan. But Ron and the planning board, which is, you know, along with the comprehensive plan committee is doing really an exceptional job. In regard to infrastructure, the red road paving program is wrapping up. We've addressed, this would be for last year's program. The one issue that remains outstanding is the final work on My Antonomi Avenue. The road continues to be rough. What was identified is basically we have water pumping from underneath the road up underneath the pavement, which has caused it to buckle. We have let it settle. We've done some patchwork. The other thing that we've done, though, is identify a solution for putting drains under the roadway to allow the water that's pumping to get out from underneath the road so the water moves away and the road remains stable. That plan is under review by the Rhode Island Energy right now because there are a number of gas lines in that area. And the gas company would like to make sure that nothing compromises that system. So we anticipate getting that approval here shortly. And that entire area being addressed with this drainage system as well as the top coat before the end of the calendar year. On the Atlantic Beach Streetscapes, we're moving towards ninety percent design, which includes the coordination for the underground and utilities, and we anticipate having those designs from Rhode Island Energy right around Christmas time. On the recreation side, Dunlap Wheeler Park has been refined, the plan has been refined after public input. And that is scheduled to come to the town council this fall. We are out to bid for a new pavilion at the senior center that's being funded from the CDBG program. That's another bid that should be coming forward to the town council for award. And then finally, we have planning underway for four pickleball courts at the John Clark Park. We have a meeting coming up with the YMCA to talk a little bit about how we coordinate that construction to take advantage of infrastructure that they already have on site, parking, and how basically we can work together to make that a successful location for pickleball. The final thing I was gonna touch upon is the Community Learning Center at the Florence Gray Site. We are currently in meetings with the state as well as the City of Newport in regard to the project itself. Construction is scheduled to begin in the month of November. There's some tenant relocation that's going on right now. And there is some outreach happening, which will include some discussion with the town council regarding contribution towards the cost of the director as well as the programs I'll be providing at the center. And those are some of the projects that I wanted to highlight from the plan that I've provided, so.
Yep. All right, thank you, Sean. All right, so Wendy, we can keep moving, right?
Yeah.
It's actually six-thirty now, so anyways, okay. All right, so let's let's do the school construction number three. Communication, there's three of them of Justin Bernard, Senior Project Manager, Project Manager Services, Colliers Project Leaders in reference to the new middle, new Middletown Middle High School. A recommendation toward RTA oh-one-C, final cleaning. B recommendation toward RTA zero-two-A, demo and abatement. And C recommendation toward RTA ten-E signage.
Motion received said communications.
All in favor? Aye. Justin?
Thank you very much and good evening. Jumping right into the first recommendation to award, zero-one-C, which is for final cleaning. Gilbane Building Corporation and Colliers are recommending SOS Corporation in the amount of two-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars, which is thirty-five thousand dollars less than the sixty percent construction document budget. It also includes twenty-five percent minority business enterprise participation. And there are no applicable alternates or allowances included in this RTA. There were three initial bids. The third bidder actually withdrew during best and final. However, there was approximately thirteen, thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars between the first and second bidders, between the recommended and next bidder.
Okay. Anybody, any councils have any questions about the final cleaning? RTA? Thank you.
Okay, the next one is RTA zero-two-A for demolition abatement of the existing Gaudet School following the construction of the new Middle High School. Gilbane and Colliers are recommending Manafort Brothers Incorporated in the amount of one million, seven-hundred-ninety-five thousand dollars, which is eight-hundred-eighty-nine thousand, four-hundred-fifteen dollars less than the sixty percent construction document budget.
It's not gonna like you.
You're gonna like all three of these.
I know.
And that does include twenty-three point three-seven percent of women's business enterprise participation. There are no allowances included in this RTA. However, there are two alternates, alternate number eleven, which is to remove and dispose of all existing building furniture fixtures and equipment in the amount of one-hundred-eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Colliers is recommending that we hold that one until it can be worked out with the facilities director, whether or not the removal of the existing FFNA will be removed in-house or if they would like us to proceed with the removal with Manafort Brothers. The second alternate is a deduct alternate, alternate number twelve, which is to remove, demolish and remove the existing cell tower. I know the town administrator is working with the owner of the tower to have it removed. It's being decommissioned and removed. However, if the cell tower does not have to be removed by Manafort Brothers, there's a savings of eighty-five hundred dollars with this alternate. So until there is a definitive whether or not the owner of the owner of the cell tower is gonna be removing it or not, I'm recommending that we hold this alternate. And lastly, there were three bids for this trade. And there was a five-hundred-sixteen thousand, five-hundred-dollar variance between the recommended bidder and the second bidder.
Okay. So I just have a question on the, on the bid alternate number eleven, the one-hundred-eighty-one thousand, five hundred. And that's existing building furniture fixing equipment in the, in the current middle school?
Correct.
So why would we remove it if they're just gonna demo it unless somebody can use it? Is that what that's about?
There's often times where it gets surplus.
Who's, who's surplus is it?
The facilities director and the district can, you know, there are a few different methods through the state where they can actually offer the furniture fixing equipment to other districts in Rhode Island.
Right. So if they remove it themselves, we save one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, is what he's saying?
That's correct.
And then they can surplus it and make a little more money?
Correct.
Perfect. You're out. This can, all right. Just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that. It just, to me, it doesn't make sense, you know? Okay, and you're saying that's on hold until you work with facilities?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any councils have any questions?
No, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. And the last one I have for you today is RTA ten-E for the signage. Gilbane and Colliers are recommending HSI Construction Incorporated. For the HSI's contract, we're recommending two-hundred-forty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-eighty dollars. Also recommending a twenty thousand dollar owner allowance for the monument sign, which is still in the process of being designed for a total RTA value of two-hundred-sixty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-eighty dollars. And even with the alternate, we're still fifty-six thousand, six-hundred-twenty-four dollars under the sixty percent construction document budget. There are no applicable alternates to this RTA. And I will note that we are not recommending the lowest bidder. The reason being is HSI Construction Incorporated provides one-hundred percent women business enterprise participation. There was a delta of approximately thirty-six thousand dollars to the low bidder and a delta of fifty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars to the next bidder. All you got for this one?
Okay. Any questions about the signage, the RTA for the signage? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to number four, which is the resolution of the council in reference to approving the recommendation for Gilbane Building Company to awards the subcontract for final cleaning, demo and abatement in signage and all expenses recorded in the school departments, capital projects fund, and the town administrator is authorized to notify Gilbane Company, Gilbane Building Company to award the subcontract.
Motion pass said resolution.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion about any of these RTAs? Here and none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Justin.
So right now, thank you, Justin. We appreciate it. So right now, we would like to, councillor Roberts would like to, we'd like to have a moment of silence for an MHS, former MHS student, and Charlie, you're gonna?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October thirteenth, the Middletown community lost one of its brightest stars. Kydell Fuller Miller left this world on timely age of twenty-four. My family, when we moved here in two thousand and eight, my son Mason was very nervous to meet new friends and attend a new school. Kydell was one of the first boys to meet him with his energetic attitude and warm smile. What was even more incredible is Kydell was at the time in a foster home in the process of being adopted by Kim Fuller, Jim Miller, and their family. I remember we had a birthday party and Kydell was there. He was polite, respectful, and just a great friend for our son. You would never know what he had been through. Now, in Kim and Jim's home, Kydell went on to be a great student-athlete at Middletown High School, leading the boys' soccer team to a first-place league finish and just being a great example of what a fine young man should be. After graduating from Middletown High School in two thousand and nineteen, he went on to play soccer at Babson University, where he later graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Business and Technology. I bet he was loved and respected just as much there as he was here in this community. We would see him every once in a while while he's working at Flat Waves around town and he'd have that same smile. Kydell entered the workforce in Boston in the sales and accounting field, where he eventually became an account executive at a very young age. He also ran his own three-D printing business, a skill he learned here at MHS. Again, I bet everyone he worked with felt the same way, just a great young man. I think we need more great young men in this world right now. One of Kydell's Middletown classmates and teammates, Charlie May, has organized a day of soccer, community, and mental health awareness on September twenty-eighth from nine AM to noon at Gaudet Turf Field. All funds raised will benefit two great organizations, Active Minds, and No Soul, which help our youth in our community. If you want more information, please email Charlie at C-M-E-Y-O-eight at gmail dot com or reach out to me directly at C Roberts at MiddletownRI.gov. I also have some flyers here if you're interested as well. I want to extend our sincere condolences to Fuller and Miller family. You are in our thoughts and prayers and ask that we take a moment of silence to honor Kydell.
Okay, thank you. Nice job, Charlie. Thank you. Okay, the regular meeting, six-thirty, public forum. Pursuant to Rule twenty-five of the Rules of Council, citizens may address the town on one subject only. Said subjects of substantial town business neither discussed during the regular meeting nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during this session will not be voted upon. Do we have any forms? Is there anybody on Zoom?
No.
Is Zoom working?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Any councils like to remove any items from the consent calendar? Okay.
Motion approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
Second.
Our motion is second to approve the consent calendar to entirety. All in favor? Aye. Okay, permits, number twelve, application for special event permit from the Norman Bird Sanctuary, five-eighty-three Third Beach Road for the Harvest Fair to be held on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and October fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, from ten AM to five PM.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Our motion is second to grant. Is there any further discussion? Hopefully it doesn't rain like it normally does. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Other communications, number thirteen, memorandum of Frank Spinella, FJS Associates in reference to East Main Road, Middletown, scope and budget summary.
Motion receive said memorandum.
All in favor? Aye, and we'll move right into the resolution, please. We'll have discussion. Resolution of the council in reference to FJ Associates contract, East Main Road, change order and authorize town administrator to execute said change order on behalf of the town of Middletown.
Motion to pass said resolution.
This is Frank. Or Sean?
I'm actually gonna have Patrick just go through it all, because he's, he's been really tracking how this contract and change order works, so he can walk you through the particular.
Patrick, are you coming up on this one? He looks, he looked thrilled on this.
So before you this evening is memorandum for the Horsley-Witten Group from FJS and Associates for continuing the development and the schematic design and design development for the property across the street for affordable housing. Just quickly, the funding of this is all coming from Rhode Island Housing Grant that the town secured in December of two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. And so with this, the, it's a pre-development grant. So it's all paid for from this grant on the development of the units along with the next item on the agenda, which is the consulting services of FJS and
We're gonna tackle one at a time.
Okay.
Yeah. So let's, we're gonna have to talk about this one and vote on, so this, this, what does this get us? What does this get the town? Frank? Thank you, Patrick.
So it gets us to preliminary approval. Before, we had a contract with Horsley-Witten, the engineer that we procured for schematic design. And now this gets us right through preliminary because at preliminary, you need all the engineering complete. So this gets all the engineering complete.
So, so what comes back to the council next or the housing committee? A completed drawing, an actual of everything?
The, the design had already come back to the council. You approved the design. So now it's really just the technical to work out the drainage. We work with the planning department and Public Works and DEM and the state DOT to get through the planning process and ultimately get a comprehensive permit. So it doesn't come back to you at all because you've already approved the, the design?
All right. And, and the funding, like Patrick said, is a grant paid for completely from a grant from, from the state?
As part of the ARPA program, we applied and received a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for just pre-development for this site from Rhode Island Housing. It's, it is a grant. There's no payback. It's not anything more than that.
Okay, excellent. Any councils have any questions of Frank or Patrick? What's the next step?
Finalized design, and I'm actually almost done with the RFP for a developer, development partner to take it from here. At that point, we would come back. Once the RFP is out and we've, I can recommend someone, then it would come back to you for final approval of that developer to take it and apply for funding and get it built.
Okay, so say everything aligns perfectly and when, when's the shovel going to?
A year from now.
A year from now.
Okay.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any councils have any questions? Okay. We have a motion to second to pass said resolution. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Number fifteen, memorandum of Frank Spinella, FJS Associates in reference to three-fifty-one East Main Road.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
Our motion is second to receive. All in favor? Aye. And we'll move into number sixteen, the resolution of the council in reference to FJS, FJS Associates Contract, Project Three-Fifty-One East Main Road, Change Order and authorize the town administrator to execute said change order on behalf of the town of Middletown.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Okay, discussion.
So similar to the previous item, this is all funded from the Rhode Island Housing Grant. And then this is extending FJS and Associates for another nine months.
Okay. So why nine months and not a year?
Based on the memo, it says he's completing this phase within six to nine months, so.
Okay.
Taking the nine months.
Is that standard, nine months? I mean, yes, Frank, is that, I'm just curious, nine months is just an odd number. It's
This is, this is the only, you're the only client I have that goes on for like a few months. It's usually project by project, so.
So it's performance-based? Is that what you're saying?
It's, well, it's
I'm just kidding.
We think we'll be, we'll be bid and out for nine months and then it should be okay.
Just want to have the timelines line up.
Yes, thank you.
Any councils have any questions of Patrick or Frank? Excellent. So we have a motion to second to pass said resolution. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And again, just as, just another reminder, it's completely funded from a grant from the state. Move on to town council business. I have to press myself. Resolution of the council proclaiming September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five is James, Jim, Colifford Day and the town of Middletown.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pass. I was asked, I'm gonna be making, presenting a citation and a proclamation at the Knights of Columbus on this Saturday coming up. And to Mr. Colifford, who is the knight of the year, who's contributed a lot over the years, the different groups and, and the community, and I was asked if we could do this. So I said, I'm not sure. I need to put it on the council docket and see what the council says. So that's the request. Any conversation?
Make it happen.
Okay. We have a motion to second to pass said resolution. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Anybody oppose? Number eighteen, memorandum of council Toronto in reference to tier tax, resident, non-resident tax ordinance.
We receive said memorandum.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had brought this up in a previous council meeting in regards to the two-tiered tax, resident, non-resident tax ordinance. And at that time, Peter went through it and explained to us the non-resident, resident terms. And there was a section of this that kind of caught me off guard. I didn't realize, and I, it must have been there. Obviously, we voted for it to be put in there, but when I was brought to my attention that it's possible that a resident could be a non-resident, would be a non-resident if they rented out more than two rooms in their house. So we kind of did the two-tiered tax and we also slid STRs into it. Which, you know, talking with residents and reading this, I think I'd like to withdraw that section of this ordinance so that if you're a full-time resident of Middletown and you live in that home, there's no restriction to how many rooms you can rent in the house. So at this time, if I'm a resident, I live in my home full-time and I'm under the grandfathered STR, I would be able to rent my whole house out, for example, the, the property owner would be able to. If they're under the old, if they're under the new ordinance for STRs, they have to abide by that. So it's separate. So you gotta abide by the STR ordinance that you're under. And then two-tiered tax stands on its own. So I don't think we should have that section in, in this ordinance for two-tiered tax. So withdraw the STR restrictions.
Okay, let me ask Peter, what was the original, sometimes when we do things is unintended consequence. You don't realize it until a situation arises. So I just want to make sure that, I think what Dennis is asking for, and I don't want to speak for Dennis, but Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, is that when the short-term rental committee came back last time with its recommendations that we adopted and by law, we had to grandfather the existing STRs in. And at that time, we said, by this date, if you don't, you know, this is when the grandfather date is. What's that?
You had to register.
When you had to register was the new, which is what, November or December? Whatever, whatever the date was, it was, you have to, if you're gonna apply, you're gonna be grandfathered in. So what some people did was they ran out and said to protect their right as a property owner. So say I ran out, which I didn't, but say I ran out and, and, and signed up because I wanted, if I wanted to be grandfathered in down the road as an STR before that registration deadline or whatever the deadline was. So I think all of a sudden, some residents got a notification saying, hey, since you signed up, you're no longer a resident. Is that what happened?
So, and once again, it wasn't
You're gonna pay the, the higher tax rate versus, you're gonna pay the non-resident tax rate versus the resident tax rate, even though you live full-time in that house.
Well, there isn't, so, so first of all, just to go back, because it wasn't clear exactly what councilman Toronto was, was suggesting here. When the council asked us to take a look at this, and then the council passed a resolution, which was, I think it was in late two thousand and four or early two thousand and four. The, the idea was to incentivize landlords to make dwelling units available for long-term rental. And there was a resolution passed by the council that specifically, that went up with the enabling legislation to the state that specifically said the town wishes to incentivize landlords to make dwelling units available for long-term rental in order to maintain the availability for long-term rental in order to maintain the availability of housing within the community. Uh, and with the idea, if they did that and rented their place for at least a year, even if they didn't live there, they'd get the owner occupied rate, which was something that Newport had done. Um, and so that was passed, there was a provision in the uh ordinance that the council passed and we had um, made this part of the presentation that a, a property containing a dwelling unit used or registered as a short-term rental shall not qualify for the owner occupied rate. Because we wanted those, to incentivize those units to be made available for long-term rental. Um, but there was an exception, it's that however, an owner may rent up to two bedrooms to no more than two persons per room in their primary residence while the owner is present and can still qualify for the owner occupied rate. So, and that, the intent of that was, if you've got someone who's renting out a couple of bedrooms in their own house, not a separate unit, but their own house while they're living there, um, we wanted to allow them to continue to do that, since they live there anyway, that unit is not available for long-term rental. So why not allow them to rent a couple of rooms? So that still can be done. You, you can still, um, even under the new STR ordinance, you can get, ask the zoning board for permission and you can rent a couple of rooms in your own house or your own dwelling unit and you can still qualify for the owner occupied rate. So are you talking about units that are just fully used as STRs or owner occupied units? I'm just to clarify.
So the grandfathered STR is someone can rent, they can rent their house out as an STR.
When you say their house, does that mean the house where they live or an investment property? Okay.
So if someone has the ability to do an STR, they say, hey, I'm gonna take them, I'm gonna leave for a month, then I'm gonna rent my house out. Right? And we're saying, well, if you rent your whole house out, you're gonna be a non-resident because you're renting more than two rooms. That's the letter that went out to folks saying, you're no longer a resident because you rent three rooms in your house. But you live there, you do qualify.
Well, if, if you can rent the rooms out while you live there, once again, you, you have, which was similar to the rooming house use that was in the ordinance. Um, so you still have the right to do that and it doesn't impact your ability. If you rent two rooms out in your house while you're there, it doesn't affect your ability to.
Under the current STR,
Okay.
you're a primary residence, you have the ability to rent it out as often as you want today as an STR.
I understand that, but the, and council can do whatever, council can do whatever it wants, but the intent of the resolution was to incentivize long-term rental by offering folks that um, that owner occupied rate. Um, and we talk, we talk about grandfather, grandfathering of illegal non-conforming use is a purely zoning concept, it doesn't extend to taxation, it just extends to the ability to continue that use when it's been outlawed from a zoning standpoint. So it doesn't, it doesn't mean that your tax treatment is also grandfathered.
I understand, I don't, I don't see what the logic is behind if I rent two rooms, three rooms or four rooms. What difference does it make?
Well, I'm not sure I know what the proposal is, so that's the, I guess that's the question.
I think that's, I think that's what he's asking is, um, you know, why can't, if I have three rooms or four rooms I can rent, I'm allowed to do two. Why can't I do three or four if I have that?
Well, I guess you, you would have to get more specific. How often are you renting it? Is it if your primary residence, because if it's your primary residence, you've got to still live there at least six, more than six months out of the year. So it's not as easy as just changing the number of bedrooms, so.
I think that's the point, is that getting a residence who meets the full-time resident criteria don't want to have the ability to rent their houses out short-term. But it's, they live there and they're not necessarily living there while they're renting it out, that's where you're going.
But right now.
I know the number of rooms, but you're saying.
The current ordinance, if someone.
Can you speak into the mic?
If someone today wants to do an STR, they have to go to zoning and get a special use permit.
Mm-hmm.
And they can't rent it out, they can't rent, they have to live there, it has to be their primary.
Mm-hmm.
And they can't rent out more than two rooms. And I think it was six people, wasn't it?
Four people.
Four people, okay. So that's, that, that's today. Right, so anyone who comes in and says, I want to do an STR, they're gonna go zoning, they're gonna be asked, are you living there full-time? And if they say no, then the deal's off, they can't get it. If they say yes, they say, well, you can only rent two rooms. Okay, that's the new STR. So then what we did now is we're saying, now we're gonna, we go over to the two-tiered tax and you're saying the people who have been grandfathered in, who have the right to rent out their property today, not be in the house and can rent out as any many rooms as they want, but if they do that.
That's what I'm trying to understand, are you suggesting, when you say don't have to be in the house, you
Right.
are you limiting that to people who that dwelling unit is their primary residence or just, it's just a house or a unit that they own but don't live in? That's the question.
Primary. Because right now, you, you can't do it, you can't, like if someone can't come into Middletown and buy a house and rent it out for short-term rental purposes because they don't live there.
That's what the council decided.
That's, that was in place, so that's done. What I'm saying is, now you're doing two-tiered tax. There are people out there who are short-term renters of their primary residence and because they rent three rooms out, they just got a rat, a letter saying you're now a non-resident. They can go down and say, oh, I'm only doing two, sorry, I'll only do two, and then they'll get their resident rate back, but is that really what they're gonna do? From an enforcement standpoint, I don't even know how you're gonna enforce it, so I'm just saying we should wind it back and, and don't mix the two, because they're already, people are restricted based on the current STR ordinances and there's, they're restricted by the two-tiered tax. I don't know why we're mixing the two, that's all.
I think we should.
I think, can you speak into the mic, please?
I think councillor Toronto's kind of missing the point. I, I think what was presented previously was, we had full-time residents come before the council, I know there was at least one gentleman, and speak to seven, eight months, he lives in the house, but when he's somewhere else, he wants to have the ability to rent it. But he is a full-time resident, he lives in the building. That's, I think that's where you're going, correct?
Okay.
Okay. Do you have a comment, Charlie?
So just to clarify though, what, what you just said, councillor Carleton, like is there a restriction on how many bedrooms, is that what you're saying councillor Toronto? And you'd like to lift that requirement, correct?
So you want to lift the bedroom requirement or, or the requirement that they're living there while the rental is taking place? It sounds like both.
Well, I thought, that's why I asked too.
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure, because right now, what you're saying councillor Toronto was that if you, if you live there, say, seven months a year, you rent it out for the rest of the time as a short-term rental, you don't have to stay in the house right now?
If it was previously.
If you're grandfathered. And the only, and you just want to lift the restriction of how many bedrooms?
Wants to lift the restriction on the residential tax rate.
Got you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, councillor.
Is that for, just for existing ones or for new ones?
So just grandfather, that's what you're talking about, right? I mean, listen, I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, because if the people who are grandfathered, let them keep their rights of an STR and let them stay a resident. Right now, we're telling them, okay, you're a resident, but you're an STR and you're renting out more than two rooms, you're a non-resident. It doesn't, to me, that doesn't belong, it should be.
But then some, if somebody wants to rent out more than two rooms in their house now and apply so the zoning board can get approval, do you want that to apply to that too? I'm just asking just because there's
Say that again?
Details that would.
Yeah, say it again.
Somebody who has, who goes to the zoning board next week and says, I want to rent out two or three rooms in my house, in my primary dwelling as an STR, which is allowed under the ordinance.
They're under the new ordinance.
Want them to be allowed to get that owner occupied rate as well. Because they're doing, they're doing something that complies with the ordinance versus something that I'm just trying to understand the distinction here. Because we're gonna be treating people, we, we'll end up treating people who are doing exactly the same thing differently from a tax standpoint, so I just want to understand.
If a resident moves, if a resident who lives here full-time goes in and says, I want to do short-term rentals now. They gotta go to zoning and somebody's gonna say, for you to do that, is this your primary residence? Yes, then you need to be there during the short-term rentals and you can rent up to two rooms. And you're gonna get the residence rate.
Okay. So the change that you're talking about would only apply to the people who had applied before the new ordinance took effect? On an owner occupied property?
Yeah.
Depends on how we write it, yeah.
Well, that's what he's saying, he said it's owner occupied, you're grandfathered in, uh, you can only rent two rooms.
Well, one of the other things too, because it, it does get complicated and we spent a lot of time putting this together because one of the things in talking with the zoning office and also talking with people in other communities who are addressing these sorts of issues and including accessory dwelling units, one of the concerns that, for example, the zoning staff has is that someone will come in to, to to construct an ADU, which is supposed to increase housing stock and then move into the ADU and then sort of use their main house as a, as a uh, as a STR.
They qualify because they live on the property.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I disagree that they qualify because I, I guess, this is the non, yeah, non-attorney Sean, the the primary residence is the, you know.
Oh, you got your lawyer hat on.
The resident, the resident being the ADU, that's not, that the primary residence to, to have the, the STR.
I, I, I just, you know, once again, you, and we can change it wherever you want, but I go back to the original regu- resolution and the intent of what you were trying to achieve, which was to incentivize uh, more long-term rentals. But if you have specifics that you want us to take a look at and try to uh, come back to with something, certainly we can draft it up.
Well, I guess, you know, hearing what he's saying is, for me, it's, when you're a full-time resident, you know, and that's defined by living there more than six months or six months out of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and you vote here. Right? So I can rent two rooms, but I can't rent three. If I rent three, then I'm a non-resident and I pay a higher tax rate now. Because that, that's what it's saying, right?
I think you guys, this is where it gets confusing for me because you're mixing up a lot of different things. You have, you're starting to, it sounds like you're going on the path of a new ordinance with owner occupied or whether there should be a restriction at two or three bedrooms? And I think what Dennis is talking about is the taxation for the grandfathered property. Um, so I, I, I think that's, I think you're talking about two different things as we, as we're having this discussion and as you're debating it, you're confabulating what the intent originally was of the docket item.
So if I could just ask councillor Toronto, so what you're suggesting Dennis is that what, the change that you're asking for would only apply to people who were previously registered in an owner occupied property that was their primary residence prior to the new ordinance taking effect?
Correct.
Okay. Let me see what I can put together.
Right, just.
Please.
Is it, is it the grandfathered owner occupied or grandfather in general? I guess, I know, it has to be owner occupied, yeah, so it'd be.
Would have to be owner occupied because do, doing, just giving owner occupied status to an investment property that's used as an STR would be completely uh, in conflict with what the whole idea was, so.
Oh. So two things, just to clarify, I think, on the two-bedroom thing. The intent was to, I mean, at least when we were on the subcommittee, that, and, and this is for new registrations, right?
Mm-hmm.
The idea was to make it family oriented and to get away from the possible bigger gatherings of party houses, right? That's, that's how we came up with two. Um, but that doesn't apply to anybody that was registered before the change came in. So I agree, I don't know if we're asking the right question, but as far as the people that got in before the line in the sand and they should be able to get the resident tax rate. So how do we articulate that? Through you to see whether or not it.
Well, I'll take a look, we'll take a look at the, at the data and find out how many that applies to and we can draft up uh, a revision to the ordinance for you to look at.
Do we have to make a motion to do that?
No.
Well, we have a couple of folks who'd like to speak on this, so Don.
Don Moran, five forty-nine Turner Road, um, yeah, um, two of the council members reached out to me a month and a half ago. Uh, they received an email from someone who's actually going to speak after, after me, who was grandfathered in, lives in the home, rents it out just a little bit, just to supplement income. But because they're grandfathered for non-conforming because they can rent up to three bedrooms, they don't get the resident rate. So I think that's really what councillor Toronto and councillor Roberts were asking about is, is there something we can do just for that? They do reside there twelve months of the year, not even hardly, twelve months of the year. They just have a non-conforming because it was grandfathered because it doesn't meet the new STR ordinance of two-bedroom, no more than two people per bedroom. Because if they did, they could just make it conforming and then they would get the resident rate. That's really what we're talking about here.
Right, exactly.
It's really just, you know, I know, you know, Sean and I had talked about this too, just to make sure, because I wasn't clear on the legality and the terminology as well. But that's really what we're looking at, it's those people who truly do live here who are trying to meet the spirit of that ordinance, but they don't meet the current one because they were grandfathered non-conforming because potentially it has three bedrooms, that's essentially it.
And, and the reason we had that exception is, once again, the idea was it's not a, because it's someone's primary resident, it's not a unit that's going to be available for someone to rent on a year-round basis.
Exactly.
So that, that's the reason why that exception was in there because it wasn't gonna impact housing inventory one way or the other, so.
But again, we don't know how many that may be, right? I don't know how many are grandfathered today and how many.
This doesn't seem right that I can rent two, but I can't rent three and all of a sudden I'm a non-resident. But I live there the whole time.
Again, it's just an artifact.
By the way, I pay a lot of taxes.
Of the way that the ordinance was changed, it wasn't anything intentional.
No, it's unintentional consequence.
Exactly, exactly. So we're just being forward and the speaker after me is gonna explain her situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don, Rebecca Homer.
Hello, Rebecca Homer, he did a good job in shorter words, but I will try to be sure. Oh, sorry, one sixty-five Ellery Avenue in uh, Middletown. I'm here asking for special relief from being taxed as a non-resident due to the fact that I have a short-term rental in my home. This is my primary residence. I bought one sixty-five Ellery Avenue in January of two thousand with my then-husband. Six years later, I became a single mom, I've continued to be a resident of Middletown, I've lived in the home full-time since. I work full-time locally as a nurse at Newport Hospital and I've raised my daughter here and she attended Middletown schools. Over the years, I have been doing short-term rentals in order to be able to afford, obviously, to raise my daughter as a single parent, to send her to college, keep my home and pay the ever-increasing taxes. I'm a registered three-bedroom, short-term rental grandfathered. I book a few weekends in May and a few weekends in June. I typically do rent most of July and August and then I usually do a few weekends between September and October. I have always resided in the home during rentals and I always will. The only reason I do not qualify to meet the current ordinance for the residential tax rate is because I'm grandfathered in and I have the option to rent more than two bedrooms. My taxes have increased thirty-four percent as of the letter I got last month. I am asking the council to consider looking at special cases like my own where I am renting approximately four months a year. I am in the home on the property the entire time for every rental. I have always been in a complete, complete compliance with all of the short-term rental regulations as they've changed over the years. A thirty-four percent increase in my taxes this year is a huge financial blow that certainly was not expected. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right, so Peter, you're gonna, Peter.
Just a, a question, Miss, Miss Homer's situation is hers, I'm sorry, is hers, but there was also a gentleman that came in and was talking about he meets the legal resident requirement, but he does rent the whole house out when he's like vacationing or something like that, so that's another part of it, it's not just
Understood.
the owner is living there.
Understood.
Right.
We'll uh, we'll come up with some.
Well, is this, is this something that we should just have the town solicitor look at or is this something the tax exploration committee should look at? Because I also, I don't know, like, we've been in, we've had this ordinance now for over a year now, we don't have the short-term rental subcommittee anymore. So is, is there, do we need to look at the data that's actually out there? And, and maybe make other adjustments like penalties for, for problem uh, properties as well, or is this just specific to this?
Um.
It seemed like unique circumstances.
I think, I think some of these are arising now that, you know, they get in the letter.
I think this is a tweak.
Well, I think it's, I do too, but I think if.
And, and I, I will check with uh, I can check with George and Chris to get a sense of
Okay.
how many properties are sort of in this category.
How many, how many people have brought it to their attention or how many actual properties are?
Yeah, I get a sense of how many properties this would impact. Yeah, I get a sense of how many properties this would impact. My, my sense is that the, the great majority of the um, the short-term rentals are being conducted in, in units that are not the primary dwelling unit of the owner.
Right.
So.
Right. Well, we want to make sure. It just doesn't sit right that somebody's a resident and, and this happened. That, not, not intentionally, it just.
No, understood.
We're trying to do the right thing and it happened. So, you know, let's, let's try.
No, we ought to.
Let's try and fix this.
We ought to fix it. Okay, absolutely.
Right. Dennis, thank you for bringing this up. Okay. Where are we?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Town administrator. Uh, memorandum finance director through town minister in reference to RFP for sewer rate analysis.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion to second receive. All in favor? Aye, and let's move to the resolution for discussion, please. Number twenty. Resolution of the council in reference to award for con- of contract for sewer rate analysis.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Uh, Mark, is that, are you doing this one? Patrick?
Mark will.
Mark? Flip a coin? I mean, I don't know.
Uh, very, I, I'll do it.
All right.
Uh, periodically, we have to do a sewer rate analysis. Uh, this is required um, not only for the good operations of the uh, sewer fund, um, but also it's required when we borrow money uh, to uh, for capital projects related to uh, sewer maintenance operations with the town of Middletown. Um, we've gone out to bid, um, and we have uh, the two proposals uh, that are included um, in your packet. We're recommending that you award the contract for forty-two thousand thirty dollars to New Gen Strategies and Solutions. Um, they actually have a, a long tenure of, as being a rate consultant. Um, in the past, we've used engineering firms like Weston and Sampson, but what happens is they end up partnering with one of these, these firms that specialize in the rates themselves. So not only are we, we looking at um, someone for this rate analysis, but something that we can have on board over the long term um, as we, we continue to operate and maintain our sewer system.
So what, what does it get the town, Sean? I mean, we, we know what it gets us because we have the documentation in front of it. Somebody sitting on the audience will listen to Mike, oh, well, what are they talking about?
So they're going to study, well, they'll look at our, the way our sewer rates are currently structured. And then they're also going to look at how the sewer, sewer fund operates. So they're going to look at um, what portion of the fees are, are going towards uh, fixed versus variable cost, what's going towards capital. Um, you know, those type of things. And then they'll weigh whether or not economically uh, what our capacity is to borrow more money. Uh, people only have so much money to spend on, on sewer infrastructure. So they'll, they'll help identify, um, you know, what our borrowing capacity is. Um, there would also, I would expect to be suggestions about how we structure the rate itself. That's actually something that we looked at just around when COVID struck, was looking, it was uh, councillor Santos who asked for us to look at it, you know? You know, the way that we charge sewer maintenance fees, is it appropriate or not? Um, we did do a study then. Unfortunately, with, with COVID, um, that work did get shelved because it just was a really bad time to implement a change in how we looked at um, the sewer maintenance fee. So again, it, it looks at what's the appropriate way to charge people. It looks at what's affordable, not affordable, and it helps us time our capital program um, as we, we continue to evaluate the program and make improvements.
Okay. And uh, the funding for this comes out of the sewer fund, right?
It, it does. And that was part of the budget that you, you passed this year.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep. And just, just in general, so you, the sewer rate study, the SSES study, that's another study that we're working on. The facility plan we're upgrading and then the um, operations manual. So there's really four, four parts to the sewer department, studies that, that are going on to bring us back up to where we need to be um, in order to run the fund properly uh, and the department correctly.
Okay. Any councils have any questions um about this uh, um, sewer rate analysis and the uh, and the resolution of the ward of the contract? Okay. So we have a motion to second to pass said resolution. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Uh, let's move on to number twenty-one. Memorandum of the town administrator in reference to library renovation, one-ten Enterprise Drive.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
All right, we're going to take this one one at a time because I want to make sure this is thoroughly explained before we get into the second one, which is a resolution, if you're okay with that. We have a motion to second receive. All in favor? Aye. So Sean, um, obviously you're going to need to explain what's happening here and you're going to need to explain how it's funded and who pays for that funding and why, because I've seen some things recently circulating that residents get confused because they don't know what we know, because we sit here and we discuss it and we talk about it over time. And um, want to make sure we're perfectly clear on uh, what we're doing, what this, what this bond is about, why it doesn't have to go out to vote and who pays for the bond? And the funding source for the bond.
Sure. So overall, this, this ban bond, so it's a ban, it's a bond anticipation note is um, being utilized for two purposes. The first is to refinance the purchase of the library property itself. So uh, approximately a year ago, it's, it's eleven months, it'll be a year in October, we purchased one-ten Enterprise to be uh, the new site of our library. The purchase price was three point four million dollars. And at that time, the council passed again, a, a bond anticipation note in the, in the amount of three point four million dollars to purchase the property. Um, the authority to do that, and I guess this is just to answer your question, Mr. President, it was done as what is known as a moral obligation bond, which is different than a general obligation bond. And the simplest way to describe the difference is with a moral obligation bond, the town council is promising that it will budget for the debt repayment of the loan that you're taking out. Whereas a general obligation bond pledges the good faith and taxation of the town to repay the bond. It's sort of, you secure the loan with the ability to tax the residents. So the fundamental difference is where, where the pledge comes from. And, and again, what we have done here is we, we've gone down this route of using a moral obligation bond, which is your promise and it, it literally is a promise to pay the money back for, for the borrowing. The reason we did that is this, this opportunity to buy one-ten Enterprise came about really last, it was probably the, the last week in August, first week in September, uh, it was right after, right around the Labor Day weekend. Um, the property, you know, we, we were looking at replacing the library because the current building is at the end of its, its economic life. Uh, we had an idea of what the cost of renovation or, or what, what, what it would take. Um, and then just to, to look at, when we were looking at the plan, the library had developed um, really two iterations, was a thirty thousand square foot area, which probably would cost the town around twenty-four million dollars to build. So we, 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 we were looking at that twenty-four million dollar price. And, you know, I, this idea of having to replace the library was something that had been long discussed through the process when we were looking at the school construction. If you go back through all of our debt analysis for the school construction, um, the financing of the library was already, always included in that analysis. So councils at that time knew that replacing the library was going to be part of this, this capital shift that, you know, that we, we were going to be investing in those properties. Um, so looking at one in, one-ten Enterprise, we sort of knew we were looking at twenty-four million dollars, but this was an opportunity to buy a building that had a cost of, you know, three plus million dollars. And from a renovation standpoint, we thought that would be around whatever, two hundred and fifty-ish dollars a square foot, whatever it was at the time, working with Jim Farrar. We need to put another seven, eight million dollars into it for a total cost of around twelve million dollars, which would be a cost avoidance of twelve million dollars to, to the residents. And that doesn't include reimbursement from the state or any other donations that we would have. So the challenge was for that particular building, there were already people bidding on it. So in the end, I think there was a total of three or four bidders that we were competing against the building. There was no opportunity to go out and get authority from the general assembly to have enabling legislation. There was no ability to hold an election in a timely manner to take advantage of the three point four million dollar purchase price, because that, that property would have been sold. We had a number of meetings, um, and then a vote was taken by the council that we would purchase the building for the three point four million dollars. And working with bond counsel, um, and our financial advisor identified that the moral obligation bond, which is not uncommon, it's a common instrument that, that's used by municipalities across the country, was the, and, and, and recognized by the banks, uh, because obviously we got financing for it and we, and I'm suggesting financing tonight. Um, we went forward with that as, as that's the, the flow or the means of, of getting the money to not only purchase the property at that time, but also to refund that purchase and to fund the construction um, renovation of the property as, as we go through the project phase over the next, next twelve months. So um, so that's, that's answering that question, how, how do we do it? It, it's not uncommon. It's a moral obligation bond. The council's pledged to fund it in the budget. That's what, that's what the uh, promise is to repay it. Uh, it's not an unusual instrument or, or way of doing things. It was reviewed by bond counsel. It's recognized by the financial uh, partners that we have that would, would borrow money to the town. Um, and it's expedient. And that's what we needed in order to, again, avoid twelve million dollars in cost. Um.
What is the funding source to repay the debt?
Sure.
This moral obligation bond?
Yep. So just, and I just, I just want to do one thing. Um, one of the handouts I gave you uh, this evening, it's a, the schedule that was prepared by Hilltop Securities. What we're talking about tonight is a twelve-month extension. So what we're talking about tonight is that we would be exti- we're, we're basically looking for another ban, another bond anticipation note that would be executed for a twelve-month period. Um, the total, the total amount would be eleven, eleven million, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, basically, once we go to market, nobody, they don't want eleven thousand, three sixty-five. They want it rounded to the hundred thousand dollar mark. So that, that's the dollar amount. When it comes to the purchase, uh, how this gets funded or where it all goes, um, immediately the, the first thing we do is, because there's a, there's, part of the building has um, the town finance office is moving in part of the building and part of the, the building will be used for the library. Eleven point five percent will be used by, by the town based on a a rough calculation that's been done um, here at town hall. Eighty-eight point five percent will be used by the library. Um, so basically, as we look at um, the total cost, um, have I broken down here? Yeah. So it's one point three million dollars would be attributable to the town. Roughly ten million dollars would be attributable to the library. So then a lot of this is being reversed by the uh, state. Uh, there's a state aid programs for libraries. Uh, ten percent of the purchase price will be reimbursed by the state. Ten percent of the architectural costs will be reimbursed by the state. Ten percent of the furniture and fixtures will be reimbursed by the state. Fifty percent of the renovation costs will be reimbursed by the state. Uh, so overall, we're anticipating that we would receive four point four million dollars from, from the state in reimbursement for that portion of the building attributable to the library, which leaves the town responsible for seven million dollars of the cost. So roughly thirty-nine, forty percent of the the cost is reimbursed by the, the state of Rhode Island through existing, existing programs.
What is that in dollars?
The reimbursement amount?
Yeah.
Four point four million dollars, four million.
So four million.
Three, three hundred fifty-six thousand.
So four point four million roughly, three mil- four million, three hundred sixty-five thousand reimbursed by the state of the total cost of the project.
Correct. That would be the purchase and the renovation.
Purchase and renovation.
So the remaining cost is, we, we estimate it six million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Okay. How is that paid? How does that, does that affect the taxpayer and how is that paid back?
No. So what we're looking at, and I, there's another slide which talks about funding timeline, and I think it's just sort of good to walk through the timing so everyone understands it. Um, so on the ban that we have right now, we have an interest payment due of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that will be paid from the public-private venture, the GMH money. There's a number of ways it's been described, but it'll come from the PPV money. The commencement of the project and, and, and that will, so that's going to tooth, that's going to pay off that, that loan. Um, we're going to borrow the uh, eleven point four million dollars, which will refinance the ban and, and pay for the, and fund the project renovation. The project will start in January of twenty twenty-six. We anticipate completion in August of twenty twenty-six. So it's, it's a very quick timeline to renovate the building. In October of twenty twenty-five, we anticipate there would be an interest payment of four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That would be funded by the PPV. And that's the way we had talked about it a year ago, and we continue to discuss it that way. So there will be no impact on the tax rate. And also a fiscal year twenty-seven, and, and what's going to happen after that in October of twenty twenty-five, we're going to convert, can, convert the bond anticipation note into the moral obligation bond, which would have a repayment of twenty years. So we're anticipating at that point in twenty twenty-seven, we'd have an additional interest payment of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which we would pay for with, again, out of the p- public-private venture. And then in fiscal year twenty-eight, we would anticipate based, you know, basically we would have the last principal payment, interest payment on the police station. Um, and then we would be converting over future payments that were formerly going to the police station. You know, basically, instead of paying the debt service in the police station, it'll be shifted over to pay for the debt service in the library. Um, and again, we're looking at that reimbursement, you know, offsetting the total amount of the, the debt payment that comes in. And that will go on for twenty years. So what's key is the, that, that PPV money is coming in from our relationship with the Navy. We have a fifty-year agreement which goes out for another thirty-one years. So it covers the life of the agreement. So one of the things that's been a discussion with the West Main Road is, well, we're going to use the money from, from that project to to pay for the library. And what we really have is a cash flow situation where ba- you know, basically money from the additional money coming in from the, from the West Main Road project isn't going to come in until there's a, whatever, a significant portion of the project's been developed and it's operational. So um, again, to get the library into production, we're basically accelerating the, the project and, and getting it onto a timeline by using the money from the PPV. When the West Main Road project comes online with that, that additional million-plus dollars, that money is basically, you know, the ca- at the council's discretion to, to appropriate to, for, for other purposes. There is no restriction on it. So um, I just want to make it clear that, you know, the, we're, we're not, we're not double spending the money somehow. You're, you're going to spend the money out of the PPV. It's not going to hit the tax rate. You're still going to get the money from the West Main Road and then it will be up to that future council to decide how it wants to appropriate that money in the future.
Okay.
President?
Yes, sir.
Just a Sean.
Alton Conerton.
Did very well with that.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, the other sweet part of this is we're paying approximately half the cost.
If you were to build a new library, it would, it would cost in excess of twenty-four million dollars.
Also, they're not going to skip a beat. We're not going to have to move the library somewhere and then move it back somewhere else. We're going to move it to its new location.
Correct. So, and that's something the, the lib- you know, the library director will work on, but as, as we work with the contractor, we will, we will start moving items over so that there's not a break in service. We're not going to have to, we don't have a relocation cost or a temporary a cost associated with operating remotely for a period of time. Um, you know, there, there will be a disruption, but I'm extremely confident that Kim and her staff will, will work through that. Um, you know, and we'll get to August of twenty twenty-six and we will have a new library.
Thank you.
Well, I was thinking if Kim, Kim ran this by me at one of the library board meetings was everybody rents a book in town for a week or ten days before the move and then returns it to the new library. I think we're good.
Like I said, I'm, I am confident in Kim.
Okay, we have some folks that would like to speak on this. Mike Flynn.
Good evening, Mr. President and town council. Mike Flynn, thirty-four Warren Avenue. So I have two questions. One is the purchase price. In October of twenty-four, the purchase price on this thing the town put out was three point three million. Tonight, it's three point four million. I was wondering where the other hundred thousand came. That's one question.
Good.
And I just want to know if I understood what Mr. Brown just said, that we currently have police station uh, money that's paying for something?
Yes.
That's going to stop paying for that and then you're going to take that same money. That's going to stop paying for that, and then you're going to take that same money and pay this bond?
Correct.
So while that sounds good, but if you didn't, you would have that money to spend on something else. So in effect. It is sort of still impacting the tax rate because that money is already in the tax rate.
So you can look at it like that, Mike? I don't know how many towns can can build a police station. Renovate a and then and then and and put an addition on the fire station. Put a ten, pay for a ten million dollar bond and now pay for a library at no cost to the taxpayer. Because that money we negotiated in two thousand two or two thousand four is what happened when. You know, they took over the landings and we needed to provide police service there and fire service, and so. We negotiated with a company called GMH at the time because I was on the council. And we negotiated a fifty year lease where initially we were getting the first year nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars a year for that police fire coverage. And then it goes up a certain percentage every year, Sean, do you do you remember what the percentage is that goes up the PPV money? It goes up every year and I he we can get you a solid, I think it's up to one, two or one, three now a year.
Three percent.
About three percent a year, so we could. When we did that as a council back in two thousand three or four, it was. It gave us opportunity to improve our infrastructure, and that was the idea behind it with no, because as as the time went on. You know, every budget's a difficult budget, but especially capital in trying to maintain your buildings and stuff like that, so. When we saw that opportunity, we thought, well. You know, it's a good opportunity to be able to pay for things that without affecting the tax rate. So you can look at it your way, or you can look at it the way I'm explaining it, and look what we've gotten for that money so far.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Just can we get an answer on the three point three to three point four million?
It's the cost of issuance, so when we issue a bond, we have we have issuance costs related to legal fees and and other banking fees, they are registered SEC securities, so.
Purchase cost was three million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Roughly, yes.
We had to match the thirty thousand of the bidder that was, Embrace Loans wanted to sell it to the town. Once we met with them and. And and they knew that what what the purpose of that building would be. And they were, they were, they were more favorable to us as long as we matched that price, somebody was thirty thousand dollars higher than. And what we initially thought it was going to be, and they came back and said, hey, if you match the price thirty thousand. We'll sell to the town because we we think it'd be a great purpose, repurposes the library, that that's how the discussion went.
But we, but we.
From the issuance of. The extra hundred, Sean.
The extra hundred, there there's.
Three, three point three million, three hundred and thirty thousand to three point four million.
Right, and then there would be additional legal and closing cost on the the transaction that we would have had to fund.
Okay. Okay. Terry.
Terry Flynn, thirty four Warren Avenue, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, I hope everyone had a great summer. Here we are, already mid September. Middletown residents are tapped out. There there isn't a whole lot left. From twenty thirteen to twenty twenty three, Middletown's long term debt stayed between twenty and thirty million dollars. Today, just two years later. Middletown residents have contracted debt of two hundred and one million dollars for a community of seventeen thousand people. Adults and children. I hardly know where to start. I guess I will jump into the concept, looking at things differently. If debt is retiring, for example, last October, you might remember this analysis. The public was told that, oh, we'll pay for the debt. For the library. With retiring debt, I'm not exactly sure, that must have been the police station that was being referred to, the expiration of the emergency services. To Coddington Highway and Green Lane. But both of those expenses. Are paid for right now with taxpayers' money. So what the council's proposing is that they continue to take taxpayer money. To pay for something else, instead of reducing the obligation to taxpayers, which for this young lady over here. Is it was a thirty four percent increase. Middletown residents are tapped out. Last October. When these were presented to justify the council's decision to remove the library community center from the Middletown Center proposal. I'm sure you recognize it. The council's analysis for new construction for a state of the art, built to be a library building compared to a purchase and renovate. An existing building to be a library building. It has some concerning math. First, the cost for new construction is artificially inflated on this paper. The size of the library proposed in twenty twenty two is twenty four thousand square feet. The council's analysis quotes for a thirty one thousand square foot building. That's thirty percent larger building that was originally proposed and planned for a community of this size. Apparently, the twenty nine thousand square foot building purchased is indeed too large for Middletown Library needs and too large for Middletown Library to staff. The cost for the new construction, again, right here, it's presented at eight hundred dollars a square foot. However, the fifty percent reimbursement is calculated at three hundred dollars a square foot, not four hundred dollars a square foot. To continue on this paper, part of your analysis to make this decision, there are three town projects. That the residents are or will be paying for, the new school building, the Middletown Center, and the new library. The financial analysis for both new construction and purchase and renovate includes cost to purchase land. Relocate Potsie Field and construct new multipurpose fields. Those expenses seem more appropriately part of the Middletown Center or new school projects. Not a part of a library analysis. The council proposed a town center with a library community center back in twenty twenty two. Then the council unilaterally decided to remove the library community center. Now the council's asking the public to take out a loan for as much as one point four million dollars on a decision clearly made with some inaccurate data. And one that there is not much public support for. The public laid out for the RFI, a Middletown Center with a library community center, to give them. A reason to go and spend time at their community center. As such. The council's urged not to go forward without a reassessment of actual building size, square footage needs and costs. Inappropriate line items. That were made part of the original analysis. Thank you very much for your time and consideration this evening.
So Terry, just to be clear, at least from where I sit and my math, I can't see your paper from here.
You, it's the council's paper, it's not my paper.
You have it in your hand right now, you said you can see it, I can't see it from here, and I don't want to split hairs over that, I'd like to see it.
I'd like you to look at it.
It says, I think we made a pretty good decision moving the library over here by saving about twelve million dollars. At the time, we said around fourteen, but now it's twelve.
Well, that's announced.
Right, but it's still a significant savings that taxpayers would have had to pay for.
Well.
So so you can, you can, you can, I respect your point of view.
May I respond?
Yeah, I see it a little bit differently, sure.
So I'm going to respond, I see the red light, but if you don't mind, I'd like to respond to your comment. You know, I appreciate all that everyone is trying to do. I'm just informing you of the perspective that's out there and the fact that there are clearly errors on your original sheet that. That were not caught, but also originally, the the library. We were told by the proposal and by the developers that the conceptually, that the end, that the. Library Community Center in the Town Center would be paid for. And it would be a state of the art building built specifically for library usage. With reimbursements, library grants up to fifty percent of the cost. And income from the Middletown Center development. That's no tax dollars, it's no. Tax dollars that might be out of the taxpayers' pockets paying for something else that that expires or sunsets. And then those same dollars, instead of reducing the bills to the taxpayer. It gets paid to something else for the taxpayer, I understand it's all to benefit and prove the town. But again, the taxpayers are tapped out, and here the council is asking again. When there was a proposal on the table where there would not be any real increase in taxpayer obligation. It, this term, it won't affect the tax rate. It's it's veiled. If you don't read, if if a if a debt that is paid off does not reduce your expenditures. Then you are, you have not improved your position.
Well, I think we have, and I I respectfully disagree with you, Terry, because that's one time money that's going to end. We don't make decisions with one time money that's going to end eventually. To to fund other other things that go on, and I think you would agree with that when you sat up here with us. We make decisions based on, okay, if we got one time money coming, this money's going to run out. So if we build it into the budget at some point in time, that's when the taxpayer is really going to get whacked, so we're using it to fund capital. To improve town buildings, that's what we're trying to do.
Which money is going to sunset?
Money. PPV money will sunset, it was a fifty year, that's a long time, no doubt, but if you build one time money. Into your, you can maybe look at it as not one time money, but that's how I look at it, because sooner or later, it's like a grant. It's going to go away and you're going to have to make decisions, and if you build that in over years and years and years of funding into your budget, guess what's going to happen when that ends? You're going to have a problem, or the not you, but the town's going to have a big problem, because now all of a sudden, we built all this money in and the revenue stopped. So what do we do now? So that's why we make those kind of decisions.
So so are you saying that you did not make a plan for the fifty year sunset?
We did, we we, like I said to you to Mike, I said, I don't know what town has funded a ten million dollar bond for the schools uh, ten years ago, whatever it was. Has built a police station, brand new police station, has built and renovated renovated and added on a fire station. And now is purchasing and renovating a library with that one time money, that's not tax dollars. I mean, so that's a great opportunity to improve your town without an impact to the tax rate, now if you want to look at it as, hey. That money could be used for something else, we're not going to, I'm not, somebody else can make that decision, I'm not going to take that one time money and build it a budget. And then thirty one years down the road from now, who's ever sitting up here, who's ever sitting there? Somebody can come up and go, who were those clowns that made that decision? Now what are we going to do?
So I I think I I might have misunderstood, my my point stands that the taxpayers. You continue to increase the debt. And the debt needs to be paid by the taxpayers, is that correct?
Correct.
Moral obligation bond or general obligation bond, it it's going to be out of our pockets, is that true?
No, the more more, this bond is not going to be out of your pocket. This bond is coming from one time PPV money. That's where it's coming from. To pay the debt on this library, again, that's how we paid the police station, that's how we paid the fire station, that's how we did the ten million dollar renovations to the schools at the time. With no impact to the tax rate, none, what town does that?
Yeah, well, you say no impact to the taxpayer, but if you didn't take on more debt. Would not the tax obligation be reduced because you would not have as much to pay for, or the taxpayers would not have as much to pay for?
You're right, but you're mixing the school debt, which the taxpayers are paying for with this library debt, which they're not. The and don't forget, we're going to get fifty two or fifty five percent reimbursement, it's a hundred and four thousand, a hundred and four million. Five hundred thousand back on reimbursement if we get the fifty five percent on the one ninety.
But you realize that that was also the proposal back in twenty twenty two. That the the funding of the library in the town center where the public wanted it was not going to cost any tax dollars.
Correct, because we, at that time, before this opportunity became available, to avoid a twelve million dollar additional. Debt, debt, that's why we made that decision, so.
That's what, and that's what I'm saying, I think that analysis was flawed in the first place.
Go on.
But I I think it's the same thing, you would have take, so the revenues from the project would have paid for the fund balance.
Correct.
It's the same scenario that. That we're talking about, it's, you know, so if you're arguing that the PPV money could be used for something else. The money from the project can be used for something else, so it's it's the same thing.
Correct.
Same thing is. The new library proposed. Property was a new library with a cost of twenty four million dollars. And again, when it comes to the square feet, and I'll just use the library's plan. The library seeks and and, you know, what they they were seeking, you know, thirty thousand square feet of space, not, you know, and. That number is changed as the community has worked on it, and in that case, the. The library community. You know, and there's been some adjustments made since then to make the project work, but. You know, that's the other piece of this is, you know, the original plan is a twenty four million dollar new building as opposed to a twelve million dollar renovated building. The revenue from the project was going to pay for the library versus the PPV money, which is paying for the property. At the end of the day, you're going to have that million dollars, there is that million dollars that's coming out. That can be used for whatever the council decides to do at that point in time and how they want to appropriate it, whether it's. For tax relief, for social programs, for infrastructure, I don't I don't know what a council's going to do. Or how they're going to budget at that time, it's going to be a different council. But at the end of the day, there is a tax savings, and 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 I guess the other piece is. If we weren't talking about building a library, then we were talking about significantly, you know, renovation of the existing library. You know, a building that doesn't have floors that support the library collection. HVAC that doesn't work, failing roof systems, a building beyond its useful life, so. It's not, it wasn't a matter of. Of doing nothing, it we were doing, we were doing something over there, so. Again, I think those are the the different things that the council was managing when it made the decision.
Yeah, okay.
But to say the narrative of the cost is incorrect, as I've pointed out, the flaws and the mathematical errors in that cost, and I urge the council not to go forward with this tonight.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay. Uh, Alicia.
Good evening, Alicia Reyes, thirty Blues Mine Road. I don't know how to follow up on that with that. My initial concern was the. Incurred debt. We started this path back in October of last year, I believe I was at that meeting when it was discussed. And you did explain, you and Sean had explained how. We could go forward with this without tax increases, but. I believe that the. The belief of a lot of residents was that that expiring debt. Going forward, once it expired, that it would be invested in tax relief for. For the community. Water under the bridge, I guess, because that was, you know, the proposal was approved back in October. But when I looked at the memorandum for tonight's meeting, I noticed that there is almost a million dollar increase. From when it was first proposed. And my initial thought was. This creep is killing us. The creep in debt for this town is killing us, the residents. And I am not opposed to the new library or the renovation of one ten Enterprise Center. I recognize that the library is a vital. Vital part of our community. It's more than just the library, they offer a lot of services that benefit a lot of people. What I would urge the council to do is. Maybe scale back a little bit, can we stay within budget? If every time we look at a proposal and approve it within a certain budget, you know. It increases by what, ten percent? It's going to kill us.
Yeah, I think this is the first one that's come a little bit above, because I'm pretty adamant, I think the council's pretty adamant about on time and on budget.
I come and listen to all of the updates on the the other projects, the school project.
Bad as it drives you.
The other, the other comment that I had was, when I looked at the analysis. In October, you presented it as a substantial savings by purchasing the building. The entire project was a little bit of a hard pill for us to swallow, but. If it's necessary, it's necessary. But when we, there were a couple of factors that were taken into consideration. Or into the calculation for how much we were actually saving, and I had a question on. A couple of those. One was that by removing. The initial placement of the library from West Main Road. That was going to allow Potsie Field to stay on West. that was going to allow Potsie Field to stay on West Main Road and save that money that was going to, um, that we were, was going to have to be spent getting relief from that deed restriction. Also, one of the other considerations were the two parcels of land um, at the north end, that Boomerang, and then the Navy land that we lease. I thought that those were factors that were going to be removed, that we weren't going to have to worry about those. Those are still issues, though.
So we're talking about the library tonight, though.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure what the, what that, those fossils have to do.
In the October meeting, when you explained the savings, the calculation that you came up with for how much we were saving included some aspects that were involved in freeing up that land on West Main Road. So I guess there were costs involved in getting relief from that deed restriction. And that was reduced by moving the library off of that West Main Road parcel. Also, the cost that may have been involved in acquiring the land, the Navy land that we currently don't own, that was reduced. So those um, those issues are still issues. And the other factor that I did not see in um, the calculations for how much money we're saving is um, the lost revenue from removing that ten, One Ten Enterprise Center from our tax rolls. Over the years, um, that's, I mean, on a yearly basis, maybe it's just, you know, um, very minimal. But we've permanently removed that property from our tax rolls. So when you tell us we're saving twelve million dollars, I don't think we're saving exactly twelve million dollars.
Well, twelve million is the difference between what the cost of the new library was versus what the purchase and the renovation was here.
Yes.
Right.
So if we had left it, if we had left the original plan to build it on West Main Road, um, I believe the analysis assumed that we were going to incur additional costs for those parcels of land. We're still going to incur those costs if that West Main project.
Not following you on the cost.
Okay. So I think what she's saying is that she's she's waiting for us to announce that there's a cost related to the transfer of the Navy property that that we don't have. There's a cost to associated with the transfer of the the covenant, the the restriction. So um, as of right now, there is no cost. We we anticipate no cost in moving or transferring.
Okay. You explained it much better, thank you.
That's, that's, that's what we planned for last year. And as of right now, today, with the circumstances that I'm aware of, there'll be no additional cost to transfer that covenant away from the West Main Road property.
Okay.
I just want to address, just uh, just before we we lose track of everything. There is a, and it's in my memo, there is a, an increase that the actual dollar amount is nine hundred ninety three thousand, four hundred seventy one dollars. Um, there's three components to it. Uh, two of them are real, um, well, uh, two and and some of the miscellaneous. So what we weren't able to estimate, or or we we just, again, when we we purchased the property, it was very quick. We did not have an estimator on board to let us know what the renovation was. And and quite frankly, and we we have just gotten our first round of estimates that we've been able to to reconcile. There were two trade items that we had to address. The first is millwork, uh, which is um, and the and the second is sound attenuation. And and when we looked at, and so, and just millwork, it's a hundred eighty thousand dollars. The sound attenuation is two hundred thirteen thousand dollars. When we, when our original estimate was based on work that was done at the Sal Bay Library. So renovation of the first floor. And when you think about it, it makes all the sense in the world right now. Our cost estimate was based on renovating space that was built and constructed to be a library, to be renovated space, you know. So the my starting point was a library, my ending point is a library. So the renovation, you know, takes that in consideration. But when we did our final budget here, we didn't factor in the fact that we were going from a space that was designed for late manufacturing office space to a library. So there's some additional work that needs to be done from a a woodworking standpoint and from a sound standpoint. Um, the to, and again, for the millwork, that's a hundred eighty thousand. Uh, the sound attenuation is two thirteen. There's another category, forty, so roughly four hundred thousand dollars. The other five hundred and fifty six thousand dollars is an owner's contingency. So the contractor is carrying a three percent contingency. What is proposed in the resolutions that you'll pass tonight is that project contingency will be a reservation of the town's fund balance. We're not borrowing the money. Basically, you're just recognizing that you need to have a contingency. And if we need to come back to you, that there's a reservation of the fund balance to account for that contingency. I am hopeful that we will not have to come back to you and ask for that money. But we are not obligating that money through a contract. We're not obligating that money through a borrowing. That's money that you'll reserve on the balance sheet. So the difference between the original project cost, you know, that we're actually committed to tonight and what was approved, you know, discussed back in October, is roughly four hundred thousand dollars. And again, it's those, those two, two items, millwork and uh, sound attenuation. And then um, just the point that Alicia makes about the lost revenue on on enterprise. Yeah, we're we're not going to receive property tax on that. Um, so that, that's a fair comment. I don't know what the dollar amount is. Um, but I just, she's correct. We're we'll we'll see a loss in in revenue because the property will no longer be paying taxes. And I I can provide you that. I I don't know if I have your email, but I can get you that number.
No, I, my point is just that um, there are a lot of factors involved in all of this. And um, because of the way this proposal came up, like in October, um, a lot of us, I I believe I was at that meeting.
Sat right behind Bobby over there.
Okay.
I remember this.
Okay. I I wasn't able to respond or contribute to the conversation at all because um, it was very um, very sudden. We didn't, we didn't expect it. And my concern, like, you know, with everybody else, is increasing cost to live here. Um, this is my home. I don't want to have to leave because I can't afford to stay here anymore. But our taxes continually go, are continually going up. The character of our, character of our town is changing. And it's becoming more difficult to live here. It's not as much of a pleasure as it used to be. And I just asked the council to take in into consideration all factors when making a decision. There, there are, there's often times that we have something to contribute, but if we don't have time to sit and think and absorb what you're proposing, that's a lost opportunity for us to contribute or to un- understand what you're trying to tell us. The whole, I not even going to pretend to understand the whole P P V um, how that works, that operation. But I do believe that um, a lot of taxpayers thought that there would be some tax relief when we paid up, when we paid down some of that debt. Um, and like, I understand, you explained it very well, how that has to be invested. It would have been nice if some of it could have been invested back to us instead of, you know, continue, continuing that debt. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. President.
Yes.
One other thing I'll just point out. Two of the other objectives that this project accomplishes is, the first is um, the council's desire to combine the town and school finance offices. We will be able to co-locate both of those offices into a small portion of the library building. It's it's roughly about eleven percent of the footprint.
It's about thirty three thousand square feet.
Thirty three hundred square feet. So um, but what that allows us to do is across the street where we had purchased the Ron Marx property, we will use that property to develop additional affordable housing units.
Right, yeah.
Again, I think, I I just bring it up to, you know, address the concern that we're, we're we're trying to do a number of things with with this transaction. It it did evolve somewhat.
Yeah, no, it's, it can get complicated.
And and by not using the Ron Marx property to house the accounting department and and making renovations there, we're able to do it much more efficiently by using, utilizing and sharing space with the library. Um, you know, again, I think we're trying to be as smart as possible with the amount of square feet of building that we have, trying to consolidate it, trying to share common surface, you know, common areas. And in this case, we're able to develop additional housing units and make a better housing development uh, across the street for residents that are are challenged and and looking to buy their first home, so.
Yep, okay. So Alicia, just one, every time I I, for myself, and and we we talk about it with the council, um, you're making financial decisions for sixteen thousand people. Uh, the first word that I always think of, and again, we talk about this, and Dennis and I had a conversation today about it, was the word, first word that comes on my mind, any deci- financial decision I make, sustainability. Is it sustainable? And so whether it's sustainable for the town as a whole or for the taxpayer, and again, the cost is the cost. So at some point in time, you're going to have to replace it, right? And so what's the best course of action? And, you know, when we think we're making the best decision, we're making it with our, with 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 the financial and the and the word sustainability, what's sustainable? Now, cost of cost, you know, it's, the cost of plywood is the cost of plywood, the cost of, you know, nails are the cost of nails, and that's probably not a good analogy, but that's, that's what we think of. And so it's not like, hey, let's put it to the taxpayer, you know? And so because we're taxpayers, you know? So we're making decisions whether people agree or respectfully disagree on it, and that's what we need to hear from you. But there's a, sometimes there's more factors, and maybe we could do a better job explaining it. I I also look in the mirror and go, when you start seeing things and hearing people and getting a little pushback, it's like, did we explain that right or properly? So I just want to say that, okay? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I just want to, I don't want to shut you off, but if you're going to speak, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to uh, kind of reach out to the residents that are here tonight and the ones that are not. I I I hear you, because I was sitting in a chair back there that night in October, and I was shocked. I was shocked that we were moving the library out of the town center. You know, I, as a businessman, these numbers look good to me, right? They really do. But the bottom line is, I I think this town can do a better job. That for two years, you know, before, you know, we we had years and years of discussions and meetings about the town center. People are on board with it. The first renditions were amazing, and it included the library. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up now. And and that night in October, I was shocked, and we all were. We weren't told that we were bu- buying a library. We weren't told that we were moving it out of here. And and I, so I think, you know, this town as a whole can do a better job. And and I do worry about the amount of spending that we're doing. I don't, I don't see, I I don't think we have a revenue problem in this town. I think we have a spending problem. And that's my opinion up here, and but I hear you because from someone that wasn't part of the negotiations, and nothing against anyone to the left of me. I have a lot of respect for them, as town councilors and the time they put in. But I hear you. I was sitting in that chair, and I was just a shock to hear these changes that went on in the movement of the library. Thank you.
Okay. And again, those changes were financial. And we thought we had a great location. Okay, and anybody else? That's it? Okay.
I do have a quick question.
Dennis. Yes, sir, counsel.
Well, thank you. So the tax revenue that's going to come in from the center that was going to be used to pay for the library, would that have funded all twenty four million dollars? No. No, we said the library was going to cost twenty four million dollars if we left it there, and that it would be funded by the taxes that came in from the development. That was the original idea of it.
Well, there'd be a reimbursement.
There'd be a reimbursement. I I'd have to run the numbers. It would be tight. There would be adjustments.
Okay, because that's kind of the fly in the ointment right now, that we're not talking about that's revenue that's coming in that has not been allocated towards anything at this time. So the council can make a decision.
We we don't know if it's revenue coming in, because we still have to have two hearings.
When if, okay, yes, yeah.
All right.
Great. So I'm just putting that out there, that if the council decided to use that for something else, we would hope the residents obviously would be made aware of that and have some input into where those revenue dollars are going. And maybe they will go for tax relief, I don't know. But that's money that is available because we're able to take these other bonds that are going to mature and this P, the P P V B uh, value, the dollars that are coming in for that. And I understand what you're saying, because the the saying used to be the town, the taxpayers won't feel a thing. And I used to say, that's because they're not going down either, you know? I mean, yes, it's level funding it, and now we're going to be able to get a new library using those funds that we've been using, as Paul said, for fires, the state fire and this, and the police. And um, so just, I just want to mention that, that those revenues that are supposedly coming in from the town, if that goes forward, there's money that could be used for other things. It's not going to be used for the library at this time.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this side? Will we move on to the resolution? Did you fill out a form, Chris? You you need, listen, you need to, you need to fill out a form. You know the rules. So if you want to talk, come on up, but next time, fill out a form, okay? Or if you're thinking that, and I want to be, I don't want to be tough on you, but you've been here a few times. So if you're thinking something pops in your mind while the discussion is going on, go grab a form. No problem. No, no, you can fill out, no, you're good.
Well, it's just uh, understanding two definitions. Things that I've never heard of. I haven't heard the definition, the the terms before, so I don't know what they mean.
Okay.
P P V funds, I have no idea what a P P V.
Public private venture is when we made it, we uh, negotiated, which I talked about, which I thought was spilling water. Talked about earlier, was in where the landings is now.
Okay.
We negotiated with a company called G M H. They were the property management company at the time over there. And we negotiated with them for, it was becoming housing, public housing. So, you know, we're not going to go lease that and put, and and provide fire services at no cost. So we negotiated, it ended up being nine hundred twenty four thousand dollars a year back then, with a three percent increase each year for fifty years. So uh, at the time, we kind of looked at it as, hey, we can use that money for, not for, and put in our budget, but investing in capital. Because sooner or later, it's going to run out. And if you keep putting that money in your budget every year, fifty years down the road, who's ever here, now thirty one years, because that was nineteen years ago, what are you going to do? Where are you going to get that revenue from? You're not.
So a P P V fund is simply a, we've, we've made an agreement with a private entity that is basically, they're going to give us money.
They do, every year.
Okay.
Correct.
That's.
For police and fire.
I thought I understood that, I just, okay.
No problem.
Contractor and contingencies, numbers, when those get thrown out, is that just basically a built in, in case there's a, it costs a little bit more? That's just a built in, extra ten percent based on.
Every time you do a project, whether, whether it's a private project or it's a town, you have to have a contingency.
You build it in a cushion.
Yeah, like when we, when we, when we build a, when we make a budget, and we know there's in that particular year, there's going to be some type of, whether it's, you know, police contract, fire contract, teacher contract, we put money in that contingency because it's kind of a safety net. So we, we're budgeting, if you, you know, if you fail the plan, you plan to fail, right? So you have to have something like that financially in place so that when that does, because it's coming, um, it's, you're not going to go at the last minute, uh, sorry, we got to borrow from the fund, which a lot of towns do, and next thing you know, they're broke. We're not doing that here. We're making sound financial decisions, whether maybe we just need to do a better job explaining it.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what those two things were. Thank you.
No problem, you're welcome. Okay. Let's move on to twenty two. Uh, resolution to the council in reference to appropriating eight million dollars to finance the construction, improvement, furnishing and equipping of a library and all attendant expenses, attendant expenses, including but not limited to engineering costs and capitalized interests in approving the finances thereof and the refinancing of outstanding bond anticipation notes through the issuance of appropriation obligations in an in in aggregate, aggregate amount not to exceed eleven million, four hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Is there any further discussion? Dennis.
Sure. I mean, we, we're just pretty much getting our hands on these details. I mean, we're just pretty much getting our hands on these details this evening or over the last couple of days. So is there a possibility, since I think a lot of people have probably heard this for the first time over the last couple of days, to continue this to the next meeting and then do the vote, give people time to digest the numbers, look into the numbers if they have questions for you, Sean? Versus voting on it this evening.
I need you to vote on it this evening. I have to refinance the purchase price, the three point four million dollars. I would say that the numbers have been reviewed by our, you know, as far as the construction costs have been reviewed by myself, the town's facility director, the finance director, our project manager and the construction manager. So we have, we have that worked out. That number is going to come back to the council. So ultimately, if that number was to be modified based on on that review. You wouldn't, in the final, this is a one year bond. We have to refinance the twenty years. You could refinance a different number a year from now. So I think you still have the ability to change that number, but but I would ask you to approve the dollar amount this evening.
Hey, councils, have any concerns or questions about Dennis's comments?
Hey, Mr. President. I would agree, just, you know, I'm going to vote for this because right now it makes best business sense, but I just got these numbers too. So even as a town councillor, sometimes you don't get the numbers. So thank you.
Okay. We had rough numbers. We knew, we knew when we purchased it, what, after you came back, it was going to be about eight million dollars, seven million dollars to renovate. I think it was seven million at the time, plus the purchase price. Now with the, with the additional mill work and that five hundred fifty six thousand dollars.
Seven point four. You're gonna, the next resolution, you'll set aside that contingency that you control. It's not part of the contract.
Okay.
And and again, what's going to happen, and you can see the timeline, this is happening quickly because we're basically saying, you know, we're going to have a demolition party over at the library here in the next, the next month or so. You're going to put a hole in the wall. They're going to start demolition work and start the project in January.
I want to make sure everyone knows you're talking about the new library.
The new library, one ten enterprise. With a ribbon cutting in August. This moves very quickly. But the committee will review the construction cost and will bring back the contract to you for approval. And that will be reviewed with you and the library board of trustees. So. But I, I, I don't disagree. This is moving quickly. But the costs have been socialized over the last year. It really has.
We had, we knew what it was going to cost for a square foot. That was given to us as an executive and everything else. I mean, that shouldn't be a surprise.
I'm, I'm not surprised. I know that we just decided on the square footage of the building within the last thirty days. What the actual size of the library was going to be because we were asking, how big is this library going to be? And I think that's changed. So it's flowing. I just think it's important that we keep the public aware of, you know, let's put this on the website. Let's show them what the investment is going to be, where the money is going. And if it's changing, let's notify them it's changing so people can stay up with it. I think some of the frustration is they get the changes on Tuesday or on Wednesday, and we're talking about it on Monday. So I'm just in some scenarios. So I'm just saying, this one's changing. I get it. It's moving fast. I'm going to vote for it myself because I, based on what you've just told me in regards to what we have to get done and that you're going to, numbers are going to get fine tuned again, and we're going to be able to take a look at it. But I just, let's try to be as transparent as possible. And I know you, and I, and I know you will do that. So I just want to put it out there for, for just my opinion on. Let's be over transparent. Library building committee meetings are at the library every other Wednesday. It's an open meeting. Anybody can come. There's a, Don Moran is in charge. And I guarantee you that the minutes are there impeccably every single solitary time. So if there's any question that anybody has and wants to know what's going on, come to the library. It's open to anybody.
Okay. Any further discussion? Good discussion. Any further discussion? Okay. We have a motion to second to pass said resolution. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Number twenty three, resolution of the council in reference to library renovation. One ten enterprise center, the town council designates funding of the general fund, unassigned fund balance as owner's contingency in the renovation project.
Motion to pass said resolution.
And Sean, just for the record, this is the five hundred and fifty six thousand that you've talked about earlier.
Correct. The dollar amount differs because the bond number, if you look at the schedule in the front. The total project cost is, we round the bond up from, from a certain dollar amount to the eight million, to the eight point four million dollars. So there's a small difference between the five fifty six and the four eighty seven, which represents the rounding up of the bond itself. So
Okay.
The only amount that we're setting aside is the, the four eighty one of the fund balance. And with the, the change orders, they come to the council. So.
Okay. Excellent. Does any councils have any questions of what this contingency is? Okay, excellent. So we have a motion to second to pass said resolution. All in favor? Aye. And that's built into the eleven four, right?
Which part?
The contingency, which you talked about earlier.
No, it's on top.
On top, okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay, right.
The, the contractor and his contract will have a three percent contingency.
Yep.
We should hopefully take care of that.
Okay.
You have the, the five fifty six, which is under your control, and I will have to come back to you and explain it.
Come back.
I plan not to come back, and that's been clearly communicated.
Okay, thank you very much.
Even time on budget.
Number twenty four, memorandum of MPC director through town administrator in reference to MPC extension of FY twenty six town funding.
Motion received said memorandum.
Motion to receive said memorandum. All in favor? Aye. Sean.
You have a memorandum from Lori Verderosa. We had, we had met and talked about the fact that at the end of the month, funding is going to run out for, for the department. That was, we spoke early last week and I had asked her to prepare the memo. Since then, we've had, Lori's had a number of contacts with the grantor. And I think it sounds promising. So what, what I'm recommending is if you could pass a motion tonight to approve an additional appropriation to the department of one twelfth of her budget to fund the program through the month of October. We'd like to see whether, whether the grant gets approved or not. So we would come back to you at the second meeting in October, provide you an update. If we need to extend it for another, another month, we'll do that. But this allows the prevention coalition to continue forward with their program for the fiscal year. I did share a copy of what, what the work plan is for this year with you in an email. But this would, would basically let us continue operating until we have a better idea of what the federal government is going to do. Like I said, they've, they've, they've reached out to Lori a couple of times and it seems positive. The only other risk we have is if the, the federal government shuts down on September thirtieth. That would, that would prevent us from knowing at a timely minute or whether or not the, the grantor was friendly to our grant application. So. That's what I would ask for you to approve this evening.
Okay, so we went through the, the budget process in April and May. The funding, Lori, for this was unknown because we weren't sure we were going to get this grant with sun setting. And the way things were going with grants with, with the current administration in Washington didn't look favorable at the time. So we said we would fund X amount of it, three months of it, until we could get an answer. I believe October was, I believe what we were told in May, that we would have an answer whether the grant would be funded or not. September. So well, we're in September, so we don't know yet. So we're going to do the same practice we did with the school budget. When we couldn't come to an agreement with the school a couple of years back. When we said, okay, because you had to be, you have to make that decision by June thirtieth. So that takes, fiscal year starts July first, as everyone knows. So we said, we'll fund one twelfth of that budget until we work this thing out. And that's what we did. So we're going to use the same practice here as what's being recommended. I just wanted to explain that to everybody so they understood what was going on. So does any councils have any questions or comments?
I do, Mr. President.
Mr. Roberts.
I, you know, I, I just don't understand. I, I get it. Like, we have to wait for the, we have to wait for this, this, you know, funding source and everything. But, I mean, we're in a mental health epidemic. Seventy percent of our calls to police fire, mental health. Imagine what our kids are. And so this department now is going to have to wait again and see what, I mean, I don't understand. We have the money. We, we say no to, we, we never say no to anybody else. All our departments are getting money. And, and this is an organization that helps our kids, our most important resource. And, and we're sitting here, we got to let it string along again. I just don't understand it. We have the money. I know we have the money. And, and I think we need to make this right till the end of the year, take a little pressure off so Lori can do her job. And, and really make a difference in our kids because our kids need this right now. Thank you.
Okay. So what's the difference of the balance of the rest of the year, what we would have to fund? Do you know off the top of your head?
Mark does. Lori probably does.
Yeah, that was told to, bless you. It was told to us at budget time, but my memory rate and this, that particular number is failing me and I don't want to throw out a wrong number.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening, Finance Director.
So the additional nine months to fund the program is a hundred eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
One oh eight, seven, twelve. Okay. Any councils have any questions? Because we're going to have to make a decision at some point in time.
Make the motion.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask a question to Lori? So, thanks, Lori. That we fund for the rest of the year, right? And then we get this grant anyways, is we, we wouldn't have to pay all that, right? We, we could then reimburse the town, I guess. Or is there other programs you think we could even do even on top of that?
I haven't even thought about that, to be honest with you, Charlie. Yeah, there's always other programs, expansions and stuff. But we could, if we get the funding. I'm optimistic, honestly, about the grant, the SAMSA grant. Unless they they're talking about merging SAMSA with other departments. So I don't know, but I know that we're in final review.
Okay. So Charlie, I would, I would just ask that we're a month away or less. Let's fund the twelfth and, and we'll have to make a decision at some point in time. So Sean, if, if they came back and said, no grant. And we decide we want to fund it, the, the prevention coalition, where would that money come from?
A majority of it would come from the opioid settlement dollars, and then the remainder would come from the general fund.
Okay, so for the next meeting, could, do you know how much is in the opioid settlement fund?
Mark does.
Hey, Lacy knows.
I'm going to guess seventy nine thousand.
You're looking sharp tonight, Mark. I like the tie.
About seventy nine thousand remains.
All right, so twenty eight thousand, twenty eight thousand, twenty nine thousand dollars is what we'd have to come up with.
Correct.
Okay. What's that?
Have the motion if you're ready.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize an additional appropriation equal to one twelfth of the town-funded portion of the approved Middletown Prevention Coalition budget to support operations for the month of October. While the tack, while the town awaits a decision on the pending grant application. Said appropriation shall be drawn from the opioid settlement funds received by the town. The administration shall return to the town council at its October twentieth meeting. With an update on the grant status and if necessary, request authorization for continued funding.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Dennis?
I just.
I'm sorry, I forgot you earlier.
Don't worry. I, I mean, I support what Charlie's saying. I think it's really important that we fund this. So I know we want to get this for another month, but when it comes back.
Yeah, we're going to have to make a decision. Right. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. We'll see you in October, October. Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Three favorite words, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Good night, everyone.